Okay, it's about 6:10, we're running 10 minutes late, but we're going to go into our regular meeting. And Kathy, are there any visitors?
There were no comments.
Any comments? So, anyone that's signed in, do you have any comments? I'm just going to reach out and ask. Okay, with that said, we are going to go into a brief executive session. So, we're going to go into executive sessions pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A and A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnels. And this is strictly for the interim superintendent.
Everyone, an eye?
Yeah.
Corinne McCourt, eye?
If you have an eye.
Mike, what's an eye? So, we're back in a regular session. And with our executive session last night, one of the things that we challenged ourselves as school committee members last week was to really, you know, think about a process that we want to go through for filling the interim position of superintendent. We also wanted to reach out to candidates that we felt might be interested in filling the role as interim superintendent of the Granby School District. And with that, through the executive session last night, we brought names forward. And some candidates that we brought forward removed themselves from, you know, the running of coming in as an interim superintendent. So, we do have three finalists that are very entrusted in the interim superintendent position in Granby. And that is Judith Holt, Regina Nash, and Thomas Jefferson. And those are the three names. What we are about to do is discuss the process that we want to go through, you know, whether it's a meet and greet and interview process, and then we will make a final selection for the interim superintendent's position. So, with that said, you know, I have been doing some research and different things like that since we last met, and trying to come up with, you know, things we've done in the past. And so, I do have some interview questions we've used for previous superintendents' positions here, so we can talk about that later. But, you know, one of the things I want to throw out there is, you know, as a school committee, do we want a formal interview process? And if we do, what I would recommend is pick a night. I would say not next week during vacation week, because we're trying to be very transparent. And with school vacation, we might not have the staff, or principals, administration team, along with parents. So, I was thinking that if, what we've done in the past, and I think since we've narrowed down to, you know, three finalists, that we could do 45-minute sessions. So, we could start at 6:00, go from 6:00 to 6:45, 7:00 to 7:45, and then 8:00 to 8:45 one night. And then go into an executive session, discuss the three candidates, and then make our selection. And we come out of the executive session, go into regular meeting, and announce our finalists. And at that point, we would then, you know, go off and we could do some, if we chose to do some records checks or anything like that, we could be doing that. And then we'd have to start contract negotiations. And then pick a date. So, some dates that I want to throw out is, as we know, that our current superintendent is leaving March 18th. And I would like to do our best to provide a tran, really a transition period. And so, if we could set up a night for interviews, that first week in February, I mean, the last week in February, the 26th, I think it starts. I could be wrong there.
23rd.
23rd, to do interviews. And then, hopefully, they would be able to start the following week. So, the first of March, when?
The week of the second half.
But they'd be starting, you're good. You're good. That's why we want to do it the week before. So, hopefully, we would be able to, you know, have our interviews the week of the 23rd of February. And like I mentioned, it could be one night. And then, you know, we'd make our selection. And hopefully, they could start the following week, the first week of March. If not, shortly after. So, we have a transition period with our current superintendent. I think we all agree that a transition period is extremely important.
Most of the week is on.
Yeah. So, what do you, you know, I want to open it up for discussion. What do you think of that timeline? Does that seem reasonable? And I know we're right up against, you know, our current superintendent leaving also. So, I want us to act pretty quickly on it, but I want to make sure that when we do do an interview session, that we do have it open for, you know, the staff and administration and the public. And of course, we would be doing it in an open meeting, but I just want to make sure people are available. And I would say next week might not be the right week. And so, do people agree on the week of the 23rd?
Yes.
And so, I'm just going to start going. So, with the 23rd, Monday night, work.
He can't be here.
Okay, Tuesday, 24th. Wednesday, the 25th.
Yes.
Did you say no to the 25th?
No, no to Tuesday.
Wednesday, for sure.
We can do Wednesday? So, we'll target Wednesday, the 25th.
Okay.
And do we want to do, like I mentioned, 6:00 to 6:45, 7:00 to 7:45, and 8:00 to 8:45? And if so, I would like Kathy to contact our three candidates and put out those times to them. So, does that seem reasonable?
Can we say it again? When do we start?
6:00 to 6:45.
6:00 to 6:45, 7:00 to 7:45, 8:00 to 8:45. So, Kathy, would that work for you? And could you contact?
Right now, I don't have to play it by ear, okay?
Oh, yeah.
I'll contact them, yeah, I don't have a problem. But I'm not sure about that night yet.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. You don't have to worry about the night.
Okay.
So, you know, whether you might have something planned or not, don't worry about being here to do minutes or anything like that. We will definitely work through that.
Okay.
So...
I'll contact them, I'll make all, set every, the schedule and everything, I'll set it all up.
Okay.
Should we have an alternative?
Well, what if the candidates can't?
So, if the candidates can't make it, I was going to, that's my next question, would be, can we do, you know, the 26th?
Okay.
And that would always be, you have it scheduled right now?
I have enough notice that I can, I can do something to make it work.
Okay. So, we'll have a backup as 26th, but we really want to do the 25th. And I would say that if worse comes to worse, we, do you think we should try to, if one candidate cannot make it on the 25th, do we move all three to the 26th? Or do we do two on the 25th, and one on the 26th, and then we go into the executive session?
If you can, if we can't have them all one night.
That would be best.
But if we cannot, I will make myself available both nights.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I agree.
So, if we can't, if all, if three of them, if the three cannot meet on the 25th, we'll try to move all three to the 26th. But if not, we'll have to split it between the two nights.
Sounds good.
And then whatever night it is that we've had all three interviews, we'll go into executive session that night.
Good.
And so, are you in agreement on the earliest start date? So, shoot for that first week of March.
Yes.
How much longer you want to have the transition, whether it's a week?
I think the longer the better.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we have a lot going on when you think about the budget and everything else that it takes to run a district. I don't think two weeks is unreasonable, if that's what it takes.
So, which week of March is that?
March 2nd, my start date.
Yeah.
Well, that doesn't give you two weeks.
Yeah, it does.
Well, if you do the interview the week of, the last week of February, then...
No, we're hoping that they start March 2nd.
March 2nd.
And they're with a list, with...
Well, the transition will be two weeks.
Right.
Yes. That is our desire, obviously, but if they say we can't do it, then...
Right. So, we have to work through it and figure out, you know, what the transition period would be. But I think two weeks for a superintendent's transition is, I think, pretty tight anyway. And, you know, I think we had a longer time when we transitioned before. Okay, so that would be our timeframe. And so, it really comes down to, at this point, I think, really questions. And so, in the past, actually, we should have more...
You want me to run some copies off my...
But...
We've got to make them happen.
Thank you, David. And so, I can start going through the questions, though. And so...
One of the candidates is here.
What was that?
One of the candidates is in the room.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That's unfair.
That's probably is not, okay. So, what Mr. Pete just brought to my attention is that one of our candidates is in the room. So, you know, we will distribute the questions, and then, you know, we can decide on how we want to, basically, I think there was at most 10 questions. We always kept it to 10 or less. Actually, seven. And that was definitely more than enough, you know, 45 minutes was more than enough time for these seven questions.
Do you think you need less time? Four hours, that a 45?
Um...
I'd rather allot the 45, and if it ends early, then...
We're going to take a break.
Exactly.
And so, how about it, so, the questions are going to be distributed to you tonight. Why don't you read through the questions? What I would like is that each one of you choose a question or two that you would like to ask out of those seven. But if you would want to replace one of those seven questions with another question, just let me know, and then I will compile the list of questions, so we all have them. And else, we'll have them, okay? So, that's how we'll do the question. So, I think we covered everything on the interim. Is there anything in the process for the interim superintendent that you'd want done differently, or something that we might have forgotten? So, we've decided on our candidates, we're, we came up with a timeline. Hopefully, you know, the candidates will be available that first night. If not, we have a backup date. We will reserve roughly 45 minutes for our question period. And one thing I do want to ask, and, but remember, this is a interim superintendent's position. Out of that 45 minutes, you know, I think we need to be prepared for the candidate to give an opening statement and closing remarks, if they want to do that. So, that will take up some time. Is there anything else that you guys can think of?
So, just to make it clear on the questions, we have a set of questions that have been used before. But given that we selected not to go through them right now, what are we, can you just clarify what we're doing with those? Because I would like to be able to review, and if there is anything that's potentially missing from that, that might help us, you know, our evaluation, I would like to add or change some of the questions.
And that's what I've asked. And that's what I've asked.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we still have an opportunity.
Yeah, no, I've asked, the questions were being handed out. I've asked each member to review the questions, and actually choose a question or two that you might want. And actually...
So, are you saying, if, let's say that you get, in addition to those seven questions, 20 more questions? We have to, here we go now. Are we going to...
We really have to pare them down, because we have 45 minutes.
What is the format? How are we going to do that between now and then?
So, I would, so if you don't break over medium, if you came back and said, "I want these 20 questions," I would respond to you, Deanne, and to you only, and say, you know, "We have 45 minutes. Choose two of the questions you want to ask out of your 20."
Yeah, right.
These are, you know, these are very general questions overall. And they hit, I would say, all areas of a district. So, there's going to be financials, there's going to be working with staff and administration, there's going to be questions around, you know, I said financials, the budget, but special ed, different processes that they might bring forward, and things of that nature. So...
But some of those, like the fifth one down, it would have to be changed. See, the fifth one now, that's, that would be appropriate.
Right. Right.
Well, the fourth one as well.
And so, and that's where you would... Why would that, no, I, no, the fourth one was very valid.
Yeah, I think the fourth one is valid, too.
The fourth one was very valid.
One, two, three, four, no, fifth and sixth, sorry. Fifth and sixth.
Okay. Yeah, fifth one we, right, so, so the questions are being distributed. I'm asking you to review them. We don't want to talk about it in public right now. And so, if you want one of, you know, give me, you know, send me two questions that you want to ask. And whether it's one of these, or two of these, or if you have your own two, let me know. And so, but, you know, it's a 45-minute window, plan for an opening statement and a closing So, that's, does that seem reasonable?
It does seem reasonable.
That's up to me, yeah, that would be good.
Okay. And if there's any questions that are similar, I will, I'll let one of you know that, you know, choose something else, or ask in a different area. Okay, so, are we all set with the interim? Okay. So, the next area I do want to talk about is really filling the role for superintendent long-term. And, you know, one thing that we talked about last week was, you know, setting up interviews with different search committees, and bringing them in. And we have a few that we talked about last week, a few more. So, we have NASDAQ, Future Management Systems, Hyatt Associate Hazard, and then R Association. And so, I just want to throw this out on the table, that, you know, before we, we have a lot going on right now with the hiring of interim superintendent. So, we want to hold off on bringing these vendors in for, you know, an interview, or what they wanted, or really, they're going to come in and give us a presentation, that's what they want to do, a training presentation that they will give. You know, I would like whoever is our interim, personally interim superintendent, to be part of this, because a lot of times, the sitting superintendent at that point does have some experience with, with some of these companies. And so, I would at least like them to hear the presentations. And then, I know that the school committee will be making the decision on whatever company that we decide to go with, whatever vendor. But I do think it's important that our interim superintendent also hears those presentations. So, that's my point of view. I'm sure everybody has their own, so...
I just don't want to wait too long on this. When, what time, what timeframe are you looking at?
Oh, I'm thinking mid-March.
Yeah, all right. March 16th.
Yeah, I'm thinking once they start, and they get their feet wet here, and whatever, yeah, I'm thinking, you know, mid-March. Not, I'm not talking May, June, July.
We just, yeah, we just want to get going, because...
Right.
We might not like what they tell us, and we may decide to go on our own. So, we just need that time to be able to do that, so...
Yeah.
I'm looking for March.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I'm not, I'm just saying, to not be, I would not want to be doing this before we actually hire the interim superintendent and everything else, you know. We're having our own scheduling issues, not even trying to get another budget workshop in place. So, are people in agreement to wait until we get our interim superintendent on board, and looking at presentations happening in the mid-March timeframe?
Fine, but have Kathy made any contact yet? We know, but we have, they need some time to get prepared, too.
Right. So, that's, that's the whole thing. But we have to agree to some sort of date.
I have a question.
Sure.
Did we actually all agree, are we in agreement that we're going with vendor?
No.
No, we agree.
No, we agreed that we're bringing in present, so, we agreed that we wanted presentations.
Thank you.
So, that's what we agreed upon.
And did we agree that we're having all of these folks in?
If you, just, you know, you can say you don't want one in, or whatever.
Options are good, but you named...
Four.
Four, okay.
So, Mike, what's the logic, what's the reason behind waiting till mid-March, again?
I think we have, personally, I think we have a lot going on right now.
Okay.
We're trying to hire a interim superintendent. We're trying to get our budgets together, as we're continuing new budget workshops. As a school committee, we seem to be challenged with our own personal challenges. So, by saying mid-March, I'm hoping that that's not that far out. And, you know, we'll have the transition of our outgoing superintendent and our incoming interim. And, you know, many times, like I said, the sitting superintendent does have experience working with some of these different vendors. And if we wanted their opinion, or whatever, I know it is up to us as a school committee to decide. So, unless someone is available, and they want these vendors to come in before that, and they think mid-March is unrealistic, we can, you know, I just threw that out.
I'm conflicted, because that's a, I am the way. I understand what you're saying, and it makes a lot of sense, considering the scheduling, and I get it. It's just, we're losing another month.
We're losing a month, but in the meantime, we're in the process of hiring new interim. So...
I know, I know. I'm just saying...
Yeah, yeah, I know. I just don't see us losing a month, to be honest with you. I just see that, you know, we have to have short-term and long-term goals. I see our short-term goal is getting an interim superintendent in place, getting them adjusted to the district, and then start looking for, you know, a permanent superintendent's position.
I would think if we just can focus on Monday, March 16th, to get these people in, then that gives us the focus, so they can get prepared. And I would think, I don't think we need to have four people to get forward to it. I would suggest NASDAQ, whatever, good things, and our own association of schools. Have them be prepared, and see if they can come on March 16th. And then, we can make a decision as to what the cost would be. Or do we want to then take it on ourselves, which would be a lot of work on our part, but that's a decision we have to reach.
Yep. So, that's what you want a motion, you can put a motion out there, that you want to narrow it down to two vendors, and you want the date to be March 16th.
Well, I'll make that motion, and then March 16th can arrange for, or March 16th, Monday night meeting, and see if we can arrange NASDAQ, and our association of school committees coming to do a presentation for us on searching for a new superintendent.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I want to open it up for discussion. So, this is, the motion on table is to narrow it down to two vendors that Jim mentioned, and try to bring them in for a presentation on March 16th.
Since you are the person who's been on this, on this committee the longest, as we're eliminating those two agencies, is one of them, in your experience, one that we use, that we're happy with? Because, you know, it's...
Actually, one of them that Jim mentioned is what we used before.
That we eliminated?
No, that, no, no.
Okay. So, whatever we have, I mean, I'm happy with MASC, that's, as Jim said, that's our own association, anyway. School committee is a substitution. And there is NASDAQ, which is well-known.
Yep.
So, we're eliminating the other private vendors, basically.
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
So, what's your feeling on the service that you use, free rates, like?
You know, it's a large undertaking to hire a superintendent to go through the process. So, you know, what I remember the process as was, you know, was really getting it, the position advertised. So, I can tell you, our association has a great network for advertising for a superintendent. And then, you know, coming up with a timeframe of how long resumes will be accepted for, and then narrowing down. So, last time, I believe, we received over 20-something resumes. As a search committee, we did not narrow it down. We had the vendor do the initial contact, and, and really look at, you know, did the candidate meet our qualifications? So, that's another thing they helped us with, was what do we want in a superintendent? So, they help you talk through that. And so, then, you know, that all goes into the advertisement. And then, from there, we would narrow it down to, I think we requested that we wanted to see six to eight kind of resumes in front of us, and we would meet, and we'd discuss the six to eight. And, but before that even, you know, they would help us, the vendor would actually, actually helped us create that search committee, the makeup of the search committee, so that we have administration, we have staff, we have school committee, we have community representation. So, we want to make sure that our search committee is made up of, you know, the different function... functional areas within a town. And so from there, we would start talking about the six to eight candidates. Background checks would be done. And then many times, you know, individuals that were on the committee, they would actually do their own type of checks, you know, Googling and things of that on their own. And we'd come back and we would have discussions. And this is all done in executive sessions, of course, because we, we don't have finalists at that point. And then we would narrow it down to finalists. So our finalists, last time, we had three. And from there, we would set up, if it was possible, visits to the candidate's district. And they would come and visit our district. They would, we'd do like a coffee hour, a meet and greet with the administration team, with the staff. We would do a public meet and greet. And we would do formal interview questions. And then from there, as a committee, we would go into executive session. And not right away, though, because we would get feedback from these meet and greets. And then we would, you know, narrow down our candidates, you know, narrow those three down to our finalists, to our...
Who did we use last time?
Our association.
Well, I guess my question is, if you're happy with the association that we used in the past, what is the purpose of bringing in multiple...
Because it's really, you know, you're hiring a vendor. And that doesn't mean, I think it's important that we do bring in the vendors, only because, like any company, you might have wonderful, I'll say, support or services with an individual working for that vendor or company. But then you might call in the next day and you might get a terrible consultant or whatever. So usually whoever's doing the presentation at that point is the person that we'll probably be really working with.
There's going to be price differences, I'm sure.
You know, there, there might be price differences. I actually don't think there will be much price difference between these two based on the last time. I think they were very similar in cost.
I have a feeling one way or the other because I've never been through the process.
But you will, but...
No, I know, the, the point I'm trying to make is that, I mean, of all the four or five that you mentioned, I mean, I would imagine that some have really good reputations in this arena and maybe some are mediocre, you know, maybe some are, oh, gosh, don't go to them, forget it. Right? Just, just like, just like in any other industry.
Yep.
So are we choosing the right two is my question?
I think...
I would think we are.
I think we are. I think the two that we're choosing are the most...
I have to defer to more experienced...
Are the most popular ones or common ones.
Older people.
Exactly.
Nice word.
You said it, not me.
The other key thing is who's doing the search with us? Who, if we go with an outfit, who is doing the work for us? We think we'd have some say in that, you know, it could be due to his faculty.
Well, then that's the other, do we have a say in that?
Well, that's what we'll find out.
Definitely, we'll find out in the presentation. So that's why I was bringing, you know, whether, you know, that's why we want the presentations. We just don't want to choose our association, the school committee association, and find out that, you know, the person that we're working with really doesn't connect to us or isn't hearing us on what we want as a superintendent or what the district wants as a superintendent. So that's why we...
Can you request certain folks?
If you know, I guess, but I, I wouldn't know the people. I think the person we used last time is part-time at this point and I don't know if she's actually... I think she might just be doing presentations or helping out. I don't know if she's actually doing searches at this point. And we could find that out, though.
She doing one, why doesn't she do it now?
She is doing it. So if we felt that that's what we wanted to go with again, that would be fun.
So hypothetically, if I came up with a name or two and said, "I'm requesting that this person be part of the process," is that possible?
That is aligned with one of these vendors, that works for one of these vendors?
Or, you know, however...
So I would think that you, that would be a question that you'd ask them during the presentation. Just say, "Hey, I know so-and-so works for your company. Can we have them at the presentation?"
Not saying that I do.
No, no, but if you did, no, but if you did, I would like, because that brings up a good discussion because if you do and you say, "You know what? I want Pat from Massachusetts School Committee Associations," then I would hope that she would be the one that would be here that night. So if you did have a name, I would hope that we'd get the names out sooner so that when we make the appointments for March 16th, that they're actually here so that we all get to meet the person.
They usually come in with the, with the person that's probably going to do the search if we chose them, so we'll just meet them and decide, so...
Right, but if Deanne had a name or someone else had a name. So right now, we have the motion on the table to go with two of the vendors for March 16th. Any other discussion? And if March 16th doesn't work, I should, you know, I should ask, does March 16th work for each one of you?
Why don't you ask?
No, it is the night, it's the night before St. Patty's Day.
Oh, well, then, forget it.
Let's go on March 17th.
I will not be here. I have a conflict.
I, I might have a conflict on the 16th.
So can you verify that? But we do have the motion on the table for March 16th. Do you want us to change the date right now? Do you want to, you know, it seems like March 18th might work to be...
I actually have a recurring meeting every third Monday of the month. The reason why I'm hesitating right now is that I don't have anything on my calendar for some reason, but I don't know whether that means we, I don't have, I don't have anything for that month, which is not usual. I do have a meeting for sure and typically the third Monday of each month. So I don't want to risk anything and just commit to that date and not be present here.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table for March 16th for those two vendors. So Enri, what are you, what would you like us to do? Would you like us to, you know, move this motion forward? Do you want to, and then if we need to change the date, we change the date because we do have time between now and March 16th. And we could actually tell that to the vendors. We could say, "We're shooting for March 16th, but, you know, we might have to change it due to school committee members' availability."
Let's not do it that day. I'm pretty sure it's going to be, I'm going to be booked.
Can we just change the motion? And I can't do that one today. Oh.
Okay.
I already missed, like, it's a work meeting night and I missed that tonight, so...
Nope, nope. Did you want to go up to the following Monday? The 2030?
Go ask me.
I'm asking the school committee.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm going to free them, just getting later.
Yeah, now, now we're six weeks out.
Let's do it this way.
Could we look at the week of the ninth?
Let's keep that motion on the table. I'll just find out whether or not I have a meeting.
Okay, any other discussion on March 16th then? From the motion that's on the table? All those in favor? So Kathy, I'll work with you on, for the March 16th, I guess. Okay. I just want to check our agenda, but I think that's exactly what was on our agenda tonight. So if somebody wants to, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?